I call the June 4th, 2024 Committee of a Whole Meeting of Glencoe Park District to order. Lisa, please call the role and note the time.
It is 7:02. And just a reminder to turn on your microphones because we are reporting through our new system. So we have to hear it through there. Member Born?
Yes.
Member Colby?
Here.
Member Snyder?
Here.
Member Specter?
Here.
Chair Spain?
Here. So I believe our members from the public are for later in the presentation for today. So we can move up forward. So next, just getting through here, we have an update on the 2018 ADA Plan Process. And it's Kyle.
Yeah, turning right over to Kyle.
Thank you, President Spain. So yeah, tonight, just want to do a quick, high-level overview of the ADA Transition Plan and Progress. So just to start with at a high level, the Americans with Disabilities Act requires the park district to make sure that our services, our programs and facilities are accessible to people with disabilities. The Transition Plan helps identify those barriers and make sure that we have kind of a path forward to making sure we are providing accessible routes and accessible elements. Back in 2018, the park district engaged in an ADA audit with a company called Recreation Accessibility Consultants. They came in and did an inspection and audit of our locations for ADA compliance. And from that, a transition plan was developed. This transition plan is an extremely large document. It's extremely thorough. It covers things from lowering the height of a paper towel dispenser all the way up to installing an elevator at Weinberg Family Recreation Center. So really all encompassing. And the district has made great strides in addressing these things over the past several years, both in-house projects of small and medium scale as well as large capital improvement projects. So tonight, just want to really quickly highlight projects that had been tackled here since 2018 that brought us into compliance and then discuss upcoming projects for this year and next year, as well as future projects. So all these things were in the memo. We don't have to go over in great detail. But from the pathway standpoint, the Connect Glencoe Trail was, provides an accessible route through the linear park system along Old Green Bay Road, along with ADA compliant drinking fountains and benches. The Take If Trail or the Take If Path provides an accessible route around the Take If Field and baseball fields. Playgrounds at Astor, Duke, Woodlawn, Old Elm, Vernon and Lakefront Park were all brought up to compliance. On the facilities end, the big one being Watson-Weinberg, the elevator, all throughout the entire building has become compliant post-construction. Upcoming and future projects for this fiscal year, we do have the sensory room as our largest ADA project underway. And the tennis courts at Central on Watts would become compliant, making sure the slope elevations for pathways and access are meeting code. And then, as we look kind of down into next year, if we are to move forward with West Park's renovations, that would bring that park up into compliance by providing ADA accessible routes to the ball fields, as well as the tennis courts. And then, you know, looking out beyond next year, all really the projects that we have laid out into the future where locations have not been brought up to compliance would have to be at that time. This includes major projects like anything down at the beach, the stairs, the playground, the Safran Beach House, Friends Park, Milton Park, Watts, the Parks Facility, as well as our nature areas at Clara Dietz, Everly and 14N. So as we get into those future plans of larger projects, there will be more in-depth discussion about ADA elements and improvements and those associated costs. But really wanted to take the time tonight just to update the board, a reminder that we do have the Transition Plan, that it guides our ADA decisions, and that we look at that every time we tackle a project.
And the plan is available for review by the board or the public in our administrative office. Like I said, it's too large really to post on our website or bring your, or email. So if anybody wants to review that, they're more than welcome to.
Kyle, is this something that, well, I think it's the right thing to do, obviously, for the community, but is there, are there state requirements that when you update a park that it has to be ADA assess?
Yes, so good examples, anytime we do, anytime we touch anything, there are code requirements that we have to meet for ADA compliance. I think a good example would be, just because it's top of mind, like the stairs down at the beach, when we go to do that, handrails have to be installed on any stairs that are renovated. When you put in a pathway, they have to make, meet certain slope elevation so a wheelchair can go down it safely. So it's really anytime you renovate or build anything, there's specific requirements that have to be met to bring you into ADA compliance.
And in addition, we, we look at the plan and there's many things that isn't, aren't up for a big renewal, but we can easily accomplish those. For example, paper towel dispensers, for example, were a little too high. We go ahead and lower those. So we've been doing minor things since 2018 also, besides the major renovations.
Do we have other questions?
On, recently done and Duke was recently done. How are those in need of a transition?
Howard, cut it again. So their ADA compliance, so you need an accessible route from the public sidewalk to your playground. And then, I believe it's two elements at play elevation or at surface level elevation to make them ADA compliant. That's different from a fully accessible playground or inclusive playground.
Yeah.
So there's kind of different layers of accessible, meeting compliance and inclusive. But those, sorry?
What do you have to do at Duke Park to make, why is Duke Park listed on this thing?
There is one that has been done.
Oh, this is one that happened?
Yes, and the second page in the back page is the ones that we still have to work on. I was like, I knew you were going that way.
Okay, well, thanks, Kyle. That was a really good update. I'm glad we're doing so much. So if there aren't any further comments, I'd like to move forward to discuss the Revised Conduct Ordinance 700 and Recreation Facility Procedure and Policies Manual.
All right, so we are winding down as these are the last two manuals. We believe that the board will be approved for, as part of our distinguished accreditation standards. In the Connet's Ordinance 700, this is regulates the use of parks and property owned and controlled by the Glencoe Park District. So everything from no smoking to where you can ride e-bikes, drones, everything like that. So over the last year, we did a comprehensive review. We had our attorneys review it also, made some minor changes and presented to the board for an update. So does anybody want me to go through the changes, some of the changes? Okay, so some of the changes were just language, as far as what the, the board wanted to see in there. So that was Section 1.02 through 1.09. It was additional sections regarding ordinance, control of a property, designation and citation of regulations, construction scope, regulations to be liberally constructed, designations and headings, construction conflicted, conflicting provisions, amendments and references to regulations have been added or expanded on in the ordinance. And in Section 1.04, definitions clarification, we just updated language to more thoroughly clarify and allow broader coverage of the terms. Rest on this one?
Drones?
Drones. That is actually a state law that we will be able to regulate. We could allow use of drones. So it's a very broad language to follow the state.
You want to look at my?
Guidelines, thank you, I lost it. Can't find my.
No problem.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That, so we'll be able to allow use of drones in our parks based on the state, as long as it doesn't conflict with state or federal laws or regulations. That's ever evolving, is actually with it, with Springfield right now. Additional regulations on cannabis, obviously no use of cannabis on our property unless it's medical marijuana. That's the summary of that one. We put a tree preservation and tree protection section in here, just because we feel that our trees are essential components to our park and we wanted to protect that critical infrastructure. E-bikes, they need to be registered and then there's some provisions in there about how fast they can go and things like that and where they can be used. So that was updated based on state law. And that's really the big ones on that one.
Does that e-bike include the Glencoe Connect Trail? Like, I'm trying to think where we're going to use it.
You couldn't use the e-bike Connect Glencoe. Most people don't, they just use it on the, on the roadways, but they could use it on that. That's different than a motorbike or a, you know, what else, what other word am I looking for?
Dirt bike?
Dirt bike, thank you. So it would just be the e-bikes up to a certain mile per hour, which is listed in the manual. Any questions on that? We are looking for approval of this in the June Board Meeting under Consent Agenda. There it is. Sure. Okay. Okay, we'll bring, I'll send you a red line. Like I said, it's going to be approved next month, so you're, you're fine. And if you want any changes, we'll get them to the board ahead of time before going for approval. That's okay? Yeah, the red line is going to be very tedious for you because there's a lot of changes of there and they and spaces and just to prepare you, so. Right, Eric?
Love red lines.
All right, the next one is our Recreation and Facilities Manual. You have seen some of these policies in the administrative and actually other places. I just didn't want to start pulling out things that have been approved, so I just brought it all to the board for approval. And it's also nice for you to see some of the procedures that we have in, in the district also. So this included in this policy is our Abuse and the Collected Child Reporting Act Policy, Athletic Field Use Mileage Policy, Comprehensive Year-Round Recreation Programs Policy, Early Childhood Swipe Card Policy, if you know, you approved that last year, our inclusion policy, Soccer Goal and Safety in Education Policy, which is a state law, renaming of Parks and Facilities Policy, Participant and Protestant Code of Conduct Policy, Preschool Discipline Policy, Use Recreation Planning, Development and Evaluation Policy, and Use of Parks by Groups, Organization, Commercial Purposes Policy, and our Volunteer Policy. Ones that are added that you haven't seen before is our refund, our refund and prorating procedure. I just thought that would be good for you to see. It's more a procedure than a policy that you have to approve. And our other related cancellation procedures. So the policy, the procedure we follow when we have closures. Also included is our seizure, seizure management policy and first aid procedures for approval also in this manual. Any questions? There's not really a red line version of this one because it was just policies put in there, but, okay, so you know.
Okay, is there consensus to advance the Revision to Conduct Ordinance 700 and the Recreation Procedure and Policy Manual for approval at the June 18th Board Meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we have some guests today. We have the Village Planner and Consultant Team. So we have Lee Brown here and Francie, who I've been working with them on the Plan Commission.
So this time, I'm going to excuse Bobby and Kyle. They've been doing a lot of late night meetings and so we're going to excuse them for the detail.
Okay, have a great night.
Look at this fancy system. Is this the first time we're using the whole nine yards?
Ah, second time, I think. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's the second time we're using it. So, hey, Erica, I hope it's recording on the other system because I forgot to hit play.
I.
Oh, I did.
Good timing.
I can give you a ride home if you need it.
I actually drove in anticipation of the raining.
Okay.
Now that I'm in operations, I have 16,000 calls a day on weather. It is fast. I learned more about fronts and microverse than I would ever care to know.
All right, thank you. My papers all mixed up today.
All right, and just for background, I'm on the, representing us on the Park Plan Commission. So I've been on this, part of this process and trying to represent us.
The board.
But thanks, I'll hand it over to you.
I'm sure you've done a great job.
It's green. Good evening. I'm Lee Brown and with me is Francie Lawrence, who's going to take notes. We have been working along with the Plan Commission for 18 months or so in preparation of an updated comprehensive plan for the village. We came to you, I would say about 17 months ago with an initial outline of what a comprehensive plan includes. And we have been, we, the, the Plan Commission has been working diligently throughout that process to hear from the community and to translate that into a vision and goals and objectives and strategies for moving the village forward. Little step backwards to reiterate what the comprehensive plan is supposed to do. First and foremost, it's a statement of community values. Second, it is a vision for the future and actions to achieve it. Third, are evaluations and insights and recommendations, particularly when they relate to physical places within the community. It is often a marketing tool to better represent the future and why people would want to move in or establish businesses. Most importantly, it's a guide for future decision-making. And what we have said to the commission, what we said to the village board and all of its committees, boards and commissions is that they are not going to be here in 15 years. Unlikely that they will be representing the community in 15 years. And this is their opportunity to lay the groundwork for why they made their recommendations and how it affects future decisions of the village itself. I told one mayor that it was their opportunity to rule from the grave. He didn't seem to like that. So we're in this process. We're reaching towards the end of the process. We have been spending the time listening and translating and hearing from the public. And so as we prepare for, to bring it back to the community in a forum that they would have an opportunity to comment on, we're going back to all of you and the school board and the library board and all of the individual boards and committees and commissions within the village to make sure that we're touching base, that you've had an opportunity to review it, consider it, recommend changes if necessary before we take it to the public. We've found in multiple communities that we've worked with, that, that a public hearing is probably the worst tool we've ever come up with for listening to the community. Hearing has a tendency to turn everyone off and make it very difficult for the average member of the public to comment successfully. So we will have, I believe the date is July 7th, sorry, July 9th, thank you. July 9th at, at Writer's Theater, there will be an open house at which we'll be able to have a more informal opportunity for the public to comment on the plan as we have drafted it before it goes to a public hearing, which is by law necessary one way or the other. The, the plan has to give a big picture and it has to drill down ultimately to recommended steps and strategies. And it does that, and we've characterized it in these five big ideas plus land use. And so the five big ideas being build upon the community, Glencoe's character, integrate sustainability, maintain economic resilience, care for and support the community, deliver excellence in planning, management and governance. And then we have a separate chapter that will be on land use. So we've had a variety of different forms of opportunities for the public to comment and suggest that are listed here. I won't go into detail, but from those, very importantly, these key themes that we took away from the public comment, enhance Glencoe's uniqueness, livability and community character, attract more vibrant uses downtown. Wow, sorry. Prepare for the, prepare for and lead efforts to mitigate climate change, accommodate a variety of housing opportunities and maintain the efforts to be a welcoming community. So that's what we heard from the public. And then that was translated by the actions of the Plan Commission to try to put those in a rational set of goals, objectives, strategies. And these are, these are the areas that the commission spent, Carol, you can suggest this isn't the case, but these are the areas that we spent more time and energy and, and thoughtful discussion. And the first of which is preservation of Glencoe's character, unique and historic architecture. Now, the, the numbers that are there on the page are where it's, did we give you a numbered document? Okay. Okay, sorry.
Not that I recall.
Just this one, right, this was.
We, we get used to the fact that the, the village board has a numbering system and when we send them documents, our numbers don't agree with theirs. Concerns regarding the continuity of continuing loss of smaller homes in favor of new, bigger homes. Business district vitality. A walkable and vibrant downtown, quiet tree-lined streets. The perception of Glencoe as a safe and welcoming community. The importance of sustainability, particularly resilience to climate change, but with consideration of fiscal realities. And then recommendations that involve the regulatory tools that we use to govern change in the community. And there was quite a bit of discussion about what exists as either incentives or unintentional reasons that people make decisions about the size of their home and the size of, of lots. And so the recommendations that came out were, there are some things that are having an influence on the fact that, oh, since, Francie, you can correct my, my number on this, but since 2000, there have been 25% of the community has been through a tear down and new building in its place, which leads all of the North Shore communities considerably. We don't think that's a, a good thing. 21% was the number that we actually, that was updated most recently. Nonetheless, that's a big number. That's a lot of change to the physical nature of a community. There, there has been, both from the community's perspective and comment and from the commission itself, a concern that there, we lack opportunities for seniors to stay in the community, either by way of aging in place in their, in their existing homes or by the opportunity for seeking a single level of living environment in a, in a, another form of residential unit. We went through a, a long and dramatic set of public meetings related to the redevelopment of the Hoover Estate, that very few of us felt we got the best out of what we could have. And that's because the existing zoning system that the village uses does not have a flexible tool that's referred to as planned unit development, which meant that the developer proposed 24 residential, single-family homes on lots that met the zoning requirement. And there was essentially no ability for the village to say, no, that's not what we, what we want, because that is what's called a permitted use. Planning your development might have allowed for significantly more preservation of trees, significantly more attractive environment by clustering homes together and leaving open space on the site. So the Plan Commission would like to seek the opportunity of putting that tool in place, whether it's for similar developments like Hoover or who knows what type of units, including the potentials for change within the central business district, which only allow for regulation in terms of the use and not really in terms of the character of, of what can be built in place of the existing stores that currently exist. In the bottom line, including this need to focus on urban form, particularly in the central business district, including walkability, first floor retail, appropriate parking solutions, building height and bulk, and business district vitality. Those are clear and tense. The question is, do we have the tools in place to encourage that? So enough of my talking. We would like for feedback from you, particularly related to those things where the village and the park district can work together, where some of the decisions of the village may have an impact on what the park district either needs or puts in place, where we can act together more as a partnership and less as, hopefully not as, as in conflict with our goals.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, I don't think, from having access many times, many hours, but that's trap. I don't think there are really areas where we're, we're in conflict, given that so much of it regards the central business district and our residential development. I think the areas for partnership could perhaps be, you know, around sustainability. And, you know, I, I don't really see, like, a natural conflict, like, we just went through our community survey, we're going through planning for a referendum process, and I can't see anything that we're envisioning conflict with any of the goals, but maybe some of the other board members might have some.
I'm not looking for trouble.
I'm just.
Yeah.
Looking to avert trouble by saying, if the, if the park district was concerned that there weren't adequate bikeway connections between parts of the community and its parks, or if, if lakefront activities are going to be impacted by sustainability or the change in, in climate, what can we do together to, to limit that impact on the community?
You had a few points that I thought, I thought lined up very closely with what the park district board likes to see. And the first one that jumped out to me was enhance Glencoe's uniqueness. And we want to do that and the village wants to do it. So there should be opportunities there. We're looking for the same thing. And then preserve Glencoe's character. I think the same thing, we're not looking to change the character, maybe make it more available to more people. And then you'd said, lacking opportunities to keep seniors in the community, which seems to come into housing, which I guess I had a question. So with the Hoover Estate, was that an inability to convert single-family zoning to multifamily zoning?
Well, I think the issue is that the village, unless it zones property for multifamily, that the property owner has the authority to do what's allowed under the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
They were allowed to have single-family homes and they felt the easiest way to get the money out of their property was essentially to do what was permitted. Yet, they weren't, they didn't want to take the time to rezone the property to allow for any other form, like townhomes or a cluster of condominiums.
Sure, they didn't want to, they're, they're, they want to maximize their profits and they wanted to do that as quickly as possible.
Yeah, the quickly part of that is an important element when you're a developer and time is money and it's easier to get an approval and sell the property without going through a rezoning. Yeah. We spend a lot of time on the issue of character. And character is not a single thing. Character involves the nature of a very mixed housing environment where there are very little, very few, what you would consider subdivision homes that all look alike. That's a unique thing in, you know, in modern urban environment. And to encourage people to retain their homes, to reinvest in their homes as opposed to tear them down and build much larger units, that has an impact on character. The, the, the nature of a walkable, attractive central business district where you're, you can take your dog for a walk and sit outside and have coffee, that's a unique character we'd like to enhance.
Yeah. What, what did you, it's interesting, in this final bullet point of topics of note, significant focus on urban form discussions, including walkability, right, first floor retail. So how would that change from what we have now?
Well, we have a mix of, of retailing and service uses. I think the distinction is banks aren't retailers.
Okay, okay.
Where restaurants and. Where restaurants and and storefronts admittedly generate sales tax for the village, and that's a significant element of what keeps a village financially sustainable. But importantly, people, people will be attracted to stores and restaurants and spend time in the downtown. We want them to have a pedestrian-friendly environment that they will. What we don't want is a series of parking garages that have first floor you know, walling off Tudor Court or whatever it is to make it unattractive to be a pedestrian in the in the district. What we don't want is nothing but banks.
Two thoughts. One, I I agree with Carol. I think our I think our feedback from the community is is very similar. We have the same community, so it does not surprise me. But I think I would just like to make sure that we are focusing on I I like the focus of sustainability. I happen to be reading a fascinating book on parking now that I actually just sent to Phil to read. And one of the challenges that you have is that, you know, you said you want to address parking. More parking equals more cars equals less sustainability. And so I think as as we think about this, I would not, for instance, necessarily, although I want to think about it. If the village were to say, hey, we're going to somehow find a way to increase parking at the beach. Let's say we're going to take the water tanks out from underneath the tennis courts and build a massive garage there. That, to me, would have an impact on sustainability, because you're going to have a ton of people driving to the beach. But yet it also has an impact. I'm bringing more people to the beach, which is awesome. And so I just want you to to have that in your mind, because you wrote on that last line, like we think of the parking situation. I like first floor retail. Bart, just to put this out there, my child goes to Glencoe Academy of Music and they walk upstairs to get to that place. And it's a little bit hidden, which means it makes less revenue, which means there's less taxing. So I think I think single floor, I think first floor retail is is a great idea. I think making sure that as you do this, you can walk. If you can do things like walk, if you could do things like have people walk from our parking, from our Glencoe Trail to the downtown retail, let's do it. If you can encourage people to park at the parking lots of the train station, because America's problem is not a lack of parking. It is a lack of parking exactly where you want to park. It is literally two blocks from the train station to downtown. In the city of Chicago, people are willing to walk those two blocks. In Glencoe, people complain about parking downtown. So we have to just think about how we're going to do that together and how can we use our assets like the Glencoe Trail or like other bike paths that we have, like the beach, to make sure these are are living hand in hand, because I would hate to see us. I'd hate to see us give up useful land for parking to encourage parking, which discourages sustainability.
I think you'll be happy, Michael. The plan commission completely agreed with you. And the thing is, I think it comes up because people provide feedback that they want parking in the surveys. But we as the commission agreed with you, and I think that bullet point made it sound like appropriate parking, which meant which I guess is maybe a softer way of saying we don't need more necessarily more downtown parking, but it also has to do with if we have multifamily building that maybe goes up where Tudor Court is. People have like anytime you build any sort of multifamily housing, there has to be parking for it. And so we talked about
Huge problem.
No, making for like, you know, making sure it had to be underground parking or that that parking wasn't at the street level and taking away from downtown. So I think that if in the draft of the plan, it really comes through that we want more walking, biking. We think that parking is kind of a waste of useful space, that sort of thing, but it is pretty interesting because we did get a lot of surveys, hopefully not mischaracterizing the survey feedback and 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 I think maybe if you're older, walking is more challenging. I don't know.
It is. And then, look, I'm not saying that you you shouldn't have parking. We absolutely need to have parking and we need to have things accessible. But my my thought is, is that if we can work together on how can we, how can our parks help out with some of the sustainability efforts? How can we have connect Glencoe link to downtown? And I know the village put in a lot of work to cut them all by the train station, so you can walk to Writers Theater. That's a really good example. Writers Theater did not need its own parking lot. We we took away a little, maybe 10 square feet of you know, beautiful parkway in in Green Bay, but you made it accessible at a really low. It's better to take away 10 square feet of grass than to build a 30 parking spot lot just for Writers Theater. So I think that's where we can work together. And you know, but it sounds like y'all are on board, so I will I will shut up now, but I appreciate the efforts.
I agree with every one of your points, and particularly the issue of the convenience question of parking. Before Carol was on the on the commission, we had a graphic in the downtown specific plan that showed the downtown as it was overlaid next to Old Orchard.
Yep.
And the distance from the furthest parking stall in the in downtown, in the central business district in Glencoe is shorter than the closest distance to the Apple Store.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't surprise me. It it is. It is the perception. It is if there is a spot in front of the store, it is it is for me. It is not for you. It's for me. And so I I think, you know, we just need to make sure that people are aware of that. And and the park district should should help you encourage that.
There is a new initiative of that first lot. So that first lot, right when you turn before the light now has a sign there that that's for downtown parking. That's new. So that's going to help because you are right there and you just have to cross right over to the library.
And we do want to directly address that crossing of Green Bay Road, which is at least perceived as being unsafe, if if not actually. That can be addressed.
But I've always wanted an underground thing from the library to the other side of the park, to the other side of the train tracks. That would be, but I know that that's a difficult thing. You have to make it very accessible, but like, oh, my gosh, if we were to have that, just like you had back in the day, there is an underground. There's an underground path from across Green Bay to Takeoff that is locked up. But man, if you were to if you were to solve that, I think that would, I think that would actually go far, especially for people late for the train.
Sure, yeah, more dangerous here than in the downtown, for sure.
At a minimum, we have to improve the the character and the sense of safety of the existing at-grade crossing and then maybe there are other solutions. And there was one recommendation in the plan that has so far been misinterpreted and we'll try to correct that. And that is, so the parking lot that's directly west of Cock Park.
Right, the one where you just built the new stairs and the ramp?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the misinterpretation was that we would be generating a multi-story ramp or a two-story ramp. What we're trying to suggest is the grade difference between Park and Hazel is significant enough that you can keep the existing grade level entry at both, have one set of parking below the other without having a structure that would impede the view into or from.
Right.
Park.
That would that would though increase more parking to downtown when a substantial number of of people can walk.
Yes, it's a fine balancing act. If we are to have more people with opportunities to stay in the community and live in senior environments or we we still think that there's an opportunity for the redevelopment of the Public Works Garage and potentially the Temple Court Parking Lot. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to do all of that onsite without providing parking to make sure that we don't reduce the number of parking stalls.
Okay, thank you very much.
I I do have a couple other suggestions I could probably take to fill, and I feel like these have already been dealt with already. But speaking of like the Green Bay Crossing to Takeoff. I do that almost every day to get my daughter from daycare. And it's really amazing how many, like, sometimes cars don't stop for the sidewalk and then all for the crosswalk and then like between like hometown and friends. Like, I wish there was just like a better, like, if almost they could raise the crosswalk so that cars have to think about stopping in certain areas. Maybe around popular parks that, I don't know, it's just seems like that might be a little bit more like make it a little bit better signage. Or the light that's supposed to flash in the middle of Green Bay that doesn't, like, if stuff like that would actually.
It doesn't flash?
Like, I I just think that there could be a little bit where where there's children on little tricycles and crossing the street a lot. There there are probably other areas around parks in Glencoe where that could be an issue.
You've been through Edison where nearly all the crosswalks have the flags and the
Yeah, and they're like
And the state law signs and all that.
Yeah.
Is as silly as the flags are, which I but those state law, you must stop for pedestrians have had a pretty particularly significant impact. The downside is that people stop there whether there's pedestrians or not, because they confuse the the little stop sign, but safety. Predictability. Because I think that's on a curve, if nothing else. And the question is, are people seeing?
And a lot of times, honestly, when people are on their way downtown, they are so into getting their parking spot or getting their coffee and going somewhere. They don't care if kids are waiting.
Well, they're on their phone, so.
Yeah, so I don't know.
I agree with Carol because we have that. We had that issue when I know I've talked to Villavogue at Duke Park and Friends Park and Takeoff. Those are the three very high-profile parks with and busier streets that kids cross, you know, no matter what. And so, you know, that when you talk about safe routes to parks and schools, that's one of them. And I know at Duke Park, especially they the parking is on one side of the street and you have to cross to get to the park. But that's a bigger you know, but this is a comprehensive plan. How can we address that permanently instead of, we have signs up, we have, you know, we've done all we can, speed bumps just to slow down, but the kids still get out of the car and they have to hang around the back of the car and they have to go over. So I get, I think for this board, safe routes to the park district facilities and parks and playgrounds is is something that's probably of high importance to us.
Are there parks that you feel are sort of isolated or less accessible than you want because there's no bike paths to it?
There's sidewalks to every park. There's not bike paths to every park.
The, what's the park on Fairfield Court? The one that we think is
Aster?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, Aster.
That that one's a good example of kind of a little, a little isolated, but it serves its purpose as
It's a neighborhood.
To the community
Yeah.
That lives north of West School.
Yeah, there's some neighborhood parks that
Yeah.
They're probably not as accessible, but
But it sounds like we're fairly like, I think we're almost like violently agreeing with each other on
Yeah.
Where we are, which is great.
Yeah.
I wouldn't say violently. Verbosely agreeing with each other.
I I would make one more comment about Duke Park, because I walked by that quite a bit. And and I guess the big picture is working together. If the if the park district re rebuilds a park or creates a new park, or if there is a new development, maybe change zoning next to a park, it would seem to make sense to maybe have more communication than I think there's been in the past. But I would say with Duke Park that does, that's always struck me as as being dangerous. I've I've walked by there and I walked by there on the weekends, sometimes during the day with my dog. And there'll be a nanny who parks on the other side of the street. There's two kids, one gets out and the other, he's there unattended. She's there unattended, sort of behind the car, hard to see. Getting maybe an infant out of the car and there's cars going by and this kid is not there. And the other thought on that is we should be teaching young kids basic safety. There is no crosswalk there. Basically, young kids, in my view, we're telling them you can cross the street wherever you want. And I would think since there's a there's a walkway, there's a sidewalk on the west side of the street. You could have one or two crosswalks that the kids could walk up to with the nanny or parent and then walk across. And you wouldn't want them to get bad habits at Duke Park that lead them to do a jaywalk somewhere else and have an injury. So I would love to see crosswalks by Duke Park. And just in the future, yeah, try to like coordinator or and and we're busy on our things and you do the zoning and it it doesn't always cross, but you know, from a safety perspective, maybe there's a quick, you know, opportunity for comments or
We're taking notes. Does the school district and the park district work towards bicycle safety?
Yes, yeah.
I just remember growing up and having those little bike safety events at the school. Paint's cheap, you know?
That's right.
Even even the the thermoplastic that we use for crosswalks these days is a lot less expensive than dealing with accidents. Point, point taken.
I think it would be nice to from the west side of Glencoe to more easily bike to the lake. Some wrong side of Tracker.
Yeah, we seem to be okay.
Really, I just don't really like riding on the street. I usually not on my bike, though, but like, I guess I would like to bike there, but I just feel like crossing Green Bay Road, crossing the train tracks, trying to navigate through downtown, because I think you can't ride your bike downtown. And then I don't know. It would be, it would, it, that would be a dream to be able to easily bike between Atlantic and downtown.
Perhaps on Park. Or Hazel.
I'm thinking a ramp right underneath Green Bay for you to for you to bike along. And I mean, I think Green Bay is the Green Bay is there is a real challenge, right? The car, the cars, if the lights are green, the cars zoom by. I think the crosswalk that you've put in by the train station is a is a huge step up, but it is still dependent upon others to
Respect.
To to respect it. And and I see what you're saying about a sign. But unless you put a stoplight there, same thing. I mean, look, we we have the challenge here at Takeoff at the end of Vernon. At the end of Vernon Avenue, we've got a crosswalk there and and we hope that people stop, but kids cross there all the time. So I think I definitely think there should be a focus, and we're not going to answer it here tonight, but a focus on how do you move people from east to west? And the rationale is, is that on the east side, you've got the beach, substantial parking. On the west side, you've got the majority of people live and the retail. And that is, you know, our four, our founding fathers figured that out with the fire trucks for Hazel. But Hazel is too far away for some people. So like when when we go to the beach, my kids, when they were younger, they were they'd ride their bikes on their own. They were not allowed. They had to go underneath Hazel because it's safer. And then they had to go to Park because there's a light at Park and Sheridan. And there's no light at Sheridan and Hazel. So like I specifically laid out that path for them. It's an active parent. You will as well one day. Sure, you will too. But it's those two streets are dangerous. And we we just need to, if we're going to, if we're going to work together towards getting people to the beach and getting people to retail, you've got to solve that.
Thank you. Yeah, I've always thought that we had enough north-south interconnects, but we lack the east-west.
Yeah. Well, the 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 lack of a light at Hazel and Sheridan. And quite frankly, the outdated infrastructure of a light at Sheridan and Park are things that you can address here that would help both of us out.
Yeah, I'm not giving, I'm not giving up on the potential for countdown crosswalk at Park. With the exception of, I've been told multiple times that the ICC, those who control the railroad don't want that to be in place, but other communities have it.
So talk about that one later. I'm curious about that, but we don't have to talk about it now.
Yeah. But I think if we could get that, that would have a significant if you could look at the the numbers and say, I've got 10 seconds to cross, it would make a big difference even to young kids.
Yeah, I mean, it I think you're one accident away from updating that. And I think that's the wrong way to go. I I would, I would like to see it updated beforehand to help people get to the beach.
Well, I won't take any more of your time. I appreciate if you, if something strikes you when you're reading this at three in the evening, three in the morning. to get some sleep in. Please let us know. We're either through Carol, she's ready to pass it on directly to the plant commission or or to staff. We're, we're still in the position of being able to modify or enhance what we've already done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, do we have any other business today, Lisa?
Just update on our comprehensive plan. So staff have been working on the goals and some of the objectives, which we'll be bringing to the board. Maybe, maybe at the June meeting. And so we're starting to wrap up our end result for the final copy. So we're at the end of the road for ours also. So other than that, it, camp starts on Monday and the beach has been a little slow, the weather's been a little iffy. So we're hoping for some really warm weather for that to pick up. So other than that, that's it.
Just a question, who is lighting up those fireworks on Monday morning at the beach?
So, so from what public safety says, from we understand there's a tradition for a local high school and maybe New Trir that goes to a beach and watches the sunrise. And from what we understand, there was a a small group of teenagers that then off the bluff fireworks from that. So they, I don't know if they identified those individuals. There was video capture of the vehicles, but not really clear. So
I heard it, it woke me up.
It woke me up too.
What is that?
I'm so angry.
My daughter woke up and I told her, she's like, I heard something. I think I'm hearing things. I'm like, no, you just have finals. And then our neighbor asked us if we heard gunshots.
Yeah.
And we're like, oh, maybe you did hear something.
Fireworks sound a lot sometimes loud. Fire, but it was, it was fireworks. Unfortunately, so we do work with very closely with public safety, especially this time of year. As we all know, the beach gets a lot of traffic, even if they're, it's closed. So they, every summer ramp up their patrols and but we also count on neighbors to, you know, call public safety if they see anything that that looks that they shouldn't be there. So that will continue. So I know it's frustrating for some people because they, there's people down there and we do as much patrols as we can, but we don't lock up that park. It would be impossible to lock it up because of the bluff.
Well, they were there Friday night, too. My daughter was there, even though she turned her phone off and claimed her phone died, which didn't. Because I said they're gonna call the police and they did. The police showed up and got all the eighth graders out.
Yep. So that's what, yeah.
Fun.
But there's that, that's a rite of passage and they pitch, pick a different beach every year, so we never know which one's gonna, it happens every night, the fireworks, but the the gathering for a sunrise at the beach is a tradition. Apparently, I've been told, so they switch off, so that's kind of nice.
Good to know what it was. All right.
All right.
Well, there's no reason to enter into closed session, so I recommend a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
This is a roll call. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right.
Thank you.
All right, I was trying to find the the end.
So we're